All right, let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council Meeting of April 4th, 2023. Velma, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Roberts?
Here.
Here.
Mark Button?
Here.
All right, I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak during tonight's meeting. She'd explaining those opportunities was at the front desk when entering. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet was provided, got that, and I have that copy here. If there's anyone else, we'll have different times during the meeting. So I would like to ask Mr. Mark Hutton, delete our invocation, and then the gentleman from the USS Tennessee to do our pledge of allegiance.
Do me as I pray. God, we're grateful that we can gather here tonight in this place, this time, grateful for the blessings that you've poured out on us, grateful for the beauty of this day. I'm also grateful, Lord, for these men who are standing in front of us, who are serving the United States Navy, grateful for them, for their service, and for all that they represent, the freedoms that we have been blessed with in this country. And we ask, Lord, that you help us as a nation to look to you and to preserve every aspect of our freedom. We're grateful. Lord, we ask that you be with us this night as we do the business of the city. We ask that you help us to do so in a way that is pleasing to you, that helps our citizens to flourish, that brings honor and glory to you in a powerful way. God, I ask all of this in the powerful, in the awesome, in the marvelous name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Mr. Anderson, do we have any items that need added to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. We have one late addition. It's a Resolution 23-36, and it'll be read into the record during the consent agenda portion.
Okay. All right, we have eight proclamations tonight. The first one is we have a proclamation designating the week of April 3rd through the 9th, 2023, as Navy Week in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Vice Mayor Hutton to read the proclamation. We have, from the USS Tennessee, Lieutenant Andrew Steinmetz. We have MMN-1 Matthew Stigall, ETN-1 Kevin Vanada, and CSS-2 Brandon Bryan. And we also have in attendance with us from the Navy Office of Community Outreach, Lieutenant Commander Kevin Chambers.
It's a real honor for me to read this resolution tonight. My oldest brother and nephew retired from the Navy. They were both on the submariner, so this is a real treat for me. So it's a pleasure. Whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee is honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community, and whereas the state of Tennessee is home for more than 6,600 active duty enlisted Navy sailors, 1,000 active duty Navy officers, more than 1,100 Navy reservists, and more than 12,600 Navy retirees, and whereas the United States Navy is instrumental in ensuring the safety and security of 38 billion in annual exports from the state of Tennessee, and whereas the citizens of Bristol take great pride in supporting our namesake submarines USS Tennessee and USS Greenville, and whereas since 2005, the Navy Week program has served as the Navy's flagship outreach efforts into areas of the country without a significant Navy presence, bringing a variety of assets, equipment, and personnel to a single location for a week-long series of engagements designed to bring America's Navy closer to the people it protects, and to increase the community's knowledge and understanding of their Navy and its global mission. And whereas Navy Week includes several public events, including free concerts by Navy Band Southeast, and whereas Navy Week will culminate with all participating Navy sailors supporting Spring Race Week at Bristol Motor Speedway. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim April 3rd through the 9th, 2023, as United States Navy Week, and encourages all citizens throughout the region to support the military and join in expression of our gratitude to the men and women serving in the Navy and all our armed forces.
Mayor Turner, members of council, I want to say thank you for having us here. I want to say that as soon as we flew in, we noticed what a beautiful city you have, and a beautiful part of the country, and we saw the Speedway from the air. We're very excited to have been extended an invitation to the race this Saturday. I can honestly say that after months stuck inside a submarine, we are, we're really looking forward to getting some outside time and that such an exciting event this weekend. We've also, we felt nothing but the warmest welcome from the people of this city and the council itself. We thank you for the hospitality you've shown us, and we appreciate the overwhelming support that you have for the military. We don't get that from everywhere anymore, and it is really nice and refreshing to see that here from you. Of course, the USS Tennessee, myself, and for the three sailors that are with me, we are honored and thrilled to accept this proclamation on behalf of the USS Tennessee and her crew. And I'd like to take a few minutes to tell you a little bit about what we do. The USS Tennessee is a nuclear ballistic missile submarine. This means we are a fully functioning nuclear missile silo on a fully functioning nuclear submarine. If the USS Tennessee were an independent nation, it would be the fourth most powerful nuclear nation in the world. Our job is to deploy in the Atlantic Ocean and disappear underwater so that no one knows where we are. These guys don't even know where we are. But most importantly, our enemies do not know where we are. And we must be, with this deployment, where we are underway, we are constantly ready to unleash the full force of America's nuclear arsenal upon any one of this country's adversaries. The readiness that we maintain is a continuous threat to our enemies. It is an ultimatum that if they decide to launch a nuclear strike against the United States, the USS Tennessee will respond with swift and guaranteed nuclear retribution, resulting in the complete and total annihilation of the hostile country. But that is not our primary mission. Our primary mission is to preserve peace through nuclear deterrence. With our continuous presence and readiness to fire, we have discouraged the use of nuclear weapons up to this point in history, and we will continue to deter nuclear escalation for as long as necessary. Working on a submarine is a, it's a tough job, and being underwater for months at a time without seeing the sun, without communicating with our families, it requires a mentally tough sailor to make those daily sacrifices that we make every day. And with this proclamation to know that we are recognized and appreciated by the people back home, such as yourselves, it is a reinvigorating boost to our morale, and it renews us with motivation to continue to do our jobs. Mayor Turner, members of the council, meeting you and seeing how you operate has been a pleasure, and it has truly restored our faith in our government. I have every confidence that this city will continue to achieve success under your leadership, and I wish you the best in all of your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a proclamation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's really cool. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We sure do appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your service. Okay, next we have a proclamation designating the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Bristol, Tennessee. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Hutton to read this proclamation.
Absolutely.
And also I have, I guess, Ms. Crystal Key, the 911 Director of Communications and Records Manager is with us this evening to address counsel on the significance of public safety and telecommunications week.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Bristol, Tennessee Police Fire Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performances of their job in the past year, therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee declares the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Bristol, Tennessee, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. This, the fourth day of April, 2023.
Mayor, council, Mr. Anderson, I just want to take a minute to say thank you for the recognition of our profession. Public safety telecommunicators are a very important part of the city's emergency response team, and we take our role very seriously. So on behalf of my staff, I just want to thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have a proclamation designating April 5th, 2023, as Start by Believing Day in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Councilwoman Powers to read the proclamation. Ms. Brittany Fleaner, Coordinator, Community Response Specialist at the Branch House Family Justice Center is with us to address the significance of Start by Believing Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee shares a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing, it should be noted that in the year of 2021, there were 34 reported sexual assaults in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and that the Branch House Family Justice Center served the needs of 65 assault victims in and around Sullivan County. It should also be noted that the Sexual Assault Forensic Exam Program at Branch House Family Justice Center has only been in operation since March of 2020, and has already performed sadly 40 forensic exams. And whereas current estimates suggest as few as one in five sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement, and less than 3% of the sexual assaults will result in the conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator, and whereas research documents that victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or a family member, and when these loved ones respond with doubt, shame, or blame, victims suffer an additional layer of negative effects on their physical and psychological well-being. Whereas the Start of Believing Public Awareness Campaign, a program of Inviolence Against Women International, is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals, it's done so so that they can help the victims to access supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, Vince Turner, does hereby proclaim April 5th, 2023, as Start by Believing Day in support of the public awareness campaign throughout the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Ms. Fleaner?
Good evening. I'd first like to thank Mayor Turner and City Council for this wonderful proclamation. It's an honor to be here tonight to accept it on behalf of Branch House. We partnered with Ballad Health back in March of 2020 to open an onsite forensic sexual assault exam room. This is the only non-hospital facility that performs this type of exam within a 100-mile radius. In that time since its opening, our sexual assault nurse examiners have sadly performed 40 sexual assault exams for victims in and around Sullivan County. So the compassionate and trauma-informed care of sexual assault victims is one of our very top priorities. The Start by Believing Campaign is actually an initiative that was started by Inviolence Against Women International 10 years ago, and in that time, over 700 communities have adopted the Start by Believing Campaign, and Bristol has been one of those communities for the past three years in a row, which makes me, as a citizen of Bristol, very proud to live and raise a family here. As the proclamation stated, research shows that those initial disclosures are usually made to a friend or trusted family member. And so our response to those disclosures are absolutely critical. It also shows, the research also shows that only one in five of those sexual assault victims report the crime to law enforcement. So what this means is essentially the majority of sexual assault victims are not receiving the medical and emotional support and assistance that they deserve. More of those perpetrators are going undetected, which means they're not being held accountable for their crimes, which in turn will lead to more victims in the future. So the Start by Believing Campaign is just calling out to our entire community to keep in mind to, you know, start by believing those victims when they disclose sexual assault, because we're laying a healthy and positive foundation for their path to healing. And in doing that, we're removing the stigma surrounding sexual assault and creating an environment that's safe for victims to come forward and get the justice that they deserve. So thank you so much for your continued support of this campaign. We appreciate you more than you know, and have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, next we have a proclamation designating the month of April, 2023, as Autism Awareness Acceptance Month in Bristol, Tennessee, and I will read this proclamation. And we have Ms. Sarah Phillips and Ms. Caroline Sullins with us to address the significance of Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. So whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a bio-neurological development disorder that generally appears before age three and can cause social, communication, and behavioral difficulties. Autism is the fastest-growing developmental disorder, yet most underfunded. Often autistic individuals look like everyone else, but may communicate, interact, behave, and learn in different ways from other people. The learning, thinking, and problem-solving abilities of people with autism can range from gifted to severely challenged. Some people with ASD need a significant amount of support to live their daily lives, others need less. And whereas, ASD now includes several conditions that were previously diagnosed separately: autism, pervasive development disorder, not otherwise specified PDD-ONS, and Asperger's Syndrome. These conditions are all now known as Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD. Whereas according to the most recent data, ASD affects one in 36 children, and is four times more common among boys 1 in 27 than girls 1 in 116. ASD prevalence increased by 17.8% each year from 2009 to 2017, more than doubling over the past decade. The disorder impacts people of all races, ethnicities, and social economic group. And whereas many people with ASD often have difficulties with social, emotional, and communicational skills, they may repeat certain behaviors and have difficulty changing their daily routine and activities. Many people with ASD have different ways of learning, focusing and attention, and reaching two things. And whereas research shows that early intervention treatment services can significantly improve a child's development, early intervention services help children from birth to three years of age learn essential skills. Services can include speech, occupational, physical, and behavioral therapy. However, a child receiving a diagnosis after age three can also significantly benefit the same therapy services to help with delays in talking, walking, interacting with others, and inability to control behaviors, including physical aggression and self-injurious behavior. And whereas all year, but most especially during the month of April, we strive to bring awareness, acceptance, education, inclusion, and self-determination to all, and ensure that each individual with autism spectrum disorder is given a chance to achieve the highest possible quality of life. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim April 23, 3, as Autism Acceptance Awareness Month.
Councilman and mayor, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about autism, but also for bringing awareness and acceptance to our community. I humbly accept this proclamation on behalf of my very sweet, funny, loving, and cuddly three-year-old Austin, who was diagnosed with autism about a year ago. Austin's autism presents in a variety of ways, but primarily in his lack of social and communication skills, as well as delayed physical development and a variety of sensory needs. He is nonverbal, although he is not silent. I ache to hear his voice tell me all of the thoughts he has in his beautiful mind. He often doesn't innately know how to play with toys or interact with others, whether it's his peers or adults. He has needed physical therapy to learn to run and jump. I cannot speak about how autism feels for Austin, but I imagine that it's more frustrating and isolating for him than it will ever be for me. Over the course of his life, we've engaged many of the services our community has to offer. We started an early intervention to provide therapy for children like him from birth to age three. He currently attends Phillips ABA, which provides 35 hours a week of intensive individualized therapy for him in both a one-on-one and social setting. He has grown leaps and bounds in this area. He does physical therapy, speech therapy, and has seen more pediatric medical specialists than we have time to talk about. You also can often find us at We Rock the Spectrum Kids Gym, which has given Austin an amazing place to grow and develop in safety and cleanliness, as well as given us a very, very important community. I'm forever grateful for the village that surrounds my son, that's going to help him become the best version of himself, and help celebrate all of his victories, big and small. April is Autism Awareness Month, and I'm incredibly proud of the awareness our community has for autism, largely in part to the people and advocates who've come before me and fought for that. I ask you to continue to look for opportunities to include all people in social and community events. events. Isolation and loneliness are not reserved for neurotypical people only. Autistic people want to be included, and their loved ones want to be included as well. I leave you with a fact: autistic children grow up to be autistic adults. By patiently educating children who learn differently, providing inclusive opportunities for them to engage in our social community, and demanding inclusive hiring practices, we ensure that the autistic children of today become the community leaders of tomorrow. My son is far more than his autism, and I hope he has the same opportunities for success, even if that requires accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a proclamation designating the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Councilman Luttrell to read the proclamation. Mr. Steve Willinger, Community Development Eversary Committee Chair, is in attendance to accept the proclamation and speak to the significance of Fair Housing Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, April 23 marks the 55th anniversary of the enactment of the Fair Housing Act, and whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1968 seeks to eliminate discrimination in opportunities and to affirmatively make housing choices available for all Americans. And whereas, the ongoing efforts to ensure equal housing opportunity for all citizens is not the exclusive role of the federal government, but also requires state and local government efforts to combat housing discrimination as well. And whereas, the city of Bristol, Tennessee utilizes the Department of Development Services to implement an effective and responsible fair housing program, and whereas, is the intent of this city council to encourage the unified efforts of federal, state, and local governments in promoting housing opportunities for all Americans. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Fair Housing Month, this fourth day of April 2023.
For the housing that we're discussing tonight, I happen to be a Realtor as well, and one of the things that is important to us in fair housing, I'm going to read you the commitment that we make as Realtors to fair housing. Provide equal professional service without regard to race, color, religion, gender, disability, familial status, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity of any prospective client, customer, or the residence of any community. I agree to keep informed about fair housing and law practices, improving my clients' and customers' opportunities for my business. I will develop advertising that indicates that everyone is welcome and no one is excluded, expanding clients' and customer opportunities to see, buy, or lease property, to inform my clients' and customers about their rights and responsibilities in the fair housing laws by providing brochures and comprehensive information. We refuse to tolerate noncompliance to that, learn about those who are different from me, and celebrate those differences, and take a positive approach to fair housing practices, and aspire to follow the spirit as well as the letter of law. Thank you, city of Bristol, for celebrating Fair Housing Month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a proclamation designating the month of April 2023 as Donate Life Month in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Councilwoman Powers to read the proclamation. Mr. Nick Shepherd, External Affairs Coordinator for Tennessee Donor Services, is with us this evening to address counsel on the significance of Donate Life Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Tennessee Donor Services, known as TDS, is a donate life agency and nonprofit organization dedicated to saving and improving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation throughout Tennessee, and is one of 57 organ procurement organizations throughout the nation. And whereas each organ donor hero can give the gift of life to 8 people, and each tissue donor can improve another 75 lives. Whereas more than 100,000 American men, women, and children, 3,000 of whom are Tennesseans, are waiting for life-saving organ transplants. And whereas the most effective way to address this health crisis is to educate and to encourage Tennesseans to commit to registering their decision to be organ, eye, and tissue donors in the Donate Life Tennessee Registry, you can go to donatelifetn.org or at your local driver services center. And whereas Bristol, Tennessee supports saving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation and finds the cause of immediate and worthwhile importance, be it resolved that Vince Turner, mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim all of April 2023 as Donate Life Month, and encourages all citizens to become organ, eye, and tissue donors, and to register their decision to be donors in the Donate Life Registry, Tennessee Registry, the fourth day of April 2023.
As she said, we have 100,000 people on the national waiting list for a life-saving transplant, 3,000 are Tennesseans, 2,500 are Virginians, I know you guys are pretty close. And more than 100 people are saved each day when someone registers to become an organ donor. Unfortunately, 20 people die each day also waiting for a life-saving transplant. So, I would encourage you, when you're out in your community, talking to your constituents, talking to your family, your friends, to talk about organ donation this month and to ask them if they are registered. I understand it's a personal decision for everybody, and I would just encourage you to research, to look it up. We're also partnering with the Bristol Casino. I know it's across state lines here, but we'll be partnering with them on April 28th for a registration drive, so we just encourage everyone to come out. And again, thank you so much for this proclamation, and thank you for signing up and saving lives today.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could make one comment, I am the sister of one of those 20 people that passed away because an organ wasn't provided to my brother. And so, if it is a personal decision, but I hope that you will give it all personal consideration, because they're real people with real families, and it is a very tragic situation when an organ is not available. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a proclamation designating April 1 through 7, 2023, as Week of Young Child in Bristol. I would like to ask Councilwoman Luttrell to read the proclamation. Ms. Heather Long, Community Engagement Specialist of Strong Accountable Care Community from Appalachian Promise Alliance, formerly Bristol's Promise, Melissa Roberts, Executive Director, and Samantha Gray, Parenting Program Coordinator, and Ashley Stockton for Save the Children Action Network are with us to address the significance of Week of the Young Child.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the first years of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lay the foundation for all future learning. And whereas, children's cognitive, physical, social, and emotional, and language, and literacy development are built on a foundation of children's positive interactions with adults, peers, and their environment. And whereas, participation in high-quality early childhood education saves taxpayers' dollars, makes working families more economically secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages, and live healthier lives. And whereas, high-quality early childhood education depends on high-quality early childhood educators who ensure that children, supported by families, have the early experiences that they need for a strong foundation. And whereas, tuition from fee-paying parents and subsidy rates for families with low incomes are typically insufficient to afford high-quality consistently early childhood educators and pay for low child-to-early educator ratios that ensure the health and safety of children. And whereas, young children need skilled, educated, competent, consistent, and compensated early childhood educators. And whereas, young children need developmentally appropriate, accessible, and available early care and education settings. And whereas, early childhood educators need the ability to earn a family-sustaining wage that is commensurate with the required education skills they bring to the complex and valuable work that they do. And whereas, the Strong Accountable Care Act is a coalition of 370-plus partner organizations, including Appalachian Association for Children's Early Education, Appalachian Promise Alliance, Family Promise of Bristol, and Save the Children Action Network, that are working together to improve physical, social, and economic health in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia, especially by building a robust continuum of early education from birth to 8 years of age. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim April 1 through 7, 2023, as Week of the Young Child.
I do represent the Strong Accountable Care Community. My name is Heather Logan, and as the proclamation said, our coalition has over 370 partners right now, representing all areas of northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia. Our main goal is to improve the social, physical, and economic well-being of those in our region. Clearly, healthy beginnings and starting strong and having children thriving at 5 is a way to do that, to have a healthy community. So, that is a big area of focus of our work. And one of your missing councilwomen this evening, Margaret Fire-Robin, she's on our Bright Start Northeast Tennessee Steering Committee, and Ashley's going to give you all our recently-published overview of Bright Start Northeast Tennessee. This is an initiative to increase third-grade reading and math proficiency in the region, so there are lots of people that put in hours and hours into this initiative. If you have any questions about that, feel free to reach out. My contact information is on the back of that. And then also, we would like to extend an invitation to you all and everybody in the room. On April 26, right close at the Bristol train station, we are hosting a regional childcare summit. So, childcare is certainly in crisis in the entire country, and certainly in our region, we're in a childcare desert. So, you are welcome to join us on April 26 as we help solve the childcare crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. The last proclamation we have is a proclamation designating April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day, Earth Day. I will read this proclamation, and Mr. Jeremy Stout, Nature Center Manager, is with us this evening.
Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper products, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, and beautify our community. And whereas Arbor Day, Earth Day is a unique celebration focusing not on the past, but the future. And by planting this small tree, we affirm our faith in the future. And whereas, the city wishes to thank the Tree Board members for their efforts in helping to improve the quality of life in our city. Now, therefore, mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Bristol Arbor Day, Earth Day.
It's been said that planting a tree is a fundamentally selfless act. It's something we don't do for ourselves, but it's an investment that we make in our future and the habitability of our community into future generations. And so, Bristol, Tennessee, has been a Tree City USA for 35 years, and that shows a lasting commitment that this city has had in valuing its tree resources. So, whether you're hiking in Steel Creek Park, or just riding down the parkway in a car, or on any of our neighborhood streets, that continued commitment to investing in our future is evident in the city of Bristol. So, I thank Mayor Turner and council for this proclamation and continuing that commitment for the following year. Thanks so much on behalf of Parks and Rec Department and the Tree City USA Board.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have no presentations, and I guess we have the Board of Education Liaison Report. Dr. Tudor?
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure that you can relate and have experienced similar sadness to last week's shooting in Nashville. I just wanted to publicly say that as representative of the school district, we are committed to ensuring that our students and staff are as safe as possible every day. Last week, I happened to be in Nashville for a conference and had the opportunity to hear from the Tennessee Director of Homeland Security, and he mentioned two things that were key to helping ensure the safety of our students and staff. One of those is secure buildings. So, as you consider the 2024 budget, I hope that you'll continue to commit to sharing the costs for school resource officers in our school district. I can't tell you, I know I've mentioned that to you countless times, but I cannot tell you how valuable that is to, for a variety of reasons, to our community, our school community, but certainly in light of recent events, the safety of our students and staff is crucial. The other thing that he mentioned was there are almost always signs of behaviors, or indicators, or warning signs from folks who commit these heinous acts. So, I just wanted to let you all know, and the public know, that we take that very seriously. We have threat assessment teams in all of our schools, and they meet frequently on students that we deem at risk for a variety of reasons, and we partner with a variety of resources to provide the right supports that are necessary to help those individuals. to help those individuals in our schools. But what I want to point out to you in particular is it's imperative that everyone pays attention to those signs. It's not, it can't just be incumbent upon school staff to do that. Parents have to pay attention to that, community members. One of the things I want to draw attention to is we have an anonymous reporting system in our school district. We rolled it out about a couple of months ago. It is on our website. It's available to anybody, students, staff, community members, parents, whomever. It's called the Safe School Helpline, and if you click on the landing page of our website, you'll see it. There's an indicator or click there. It's monitored 24/7. Anybody can post it anytime. And it really, it's a variety of purposes, but some third-party evaluators are getting that information and evaluating it and passing that information on to us to investigate. So things like bullying, theft, thoughts of suicide, certainly violence, like a school shooting, anything like that can be reported. And we hope that that would be something that would be utilized by our community, for our school district, to ensure that our students are as safe as possible. So I just wanted to draw attention to those two things. On a more exciting note, we have kindergarten and preschool registration coming up next week, April 13, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at everyone, every individual elementary school. And then all schools begin our testing for the year on April 17. So there's some form of testing in all of our buildings coming up on April 17, and of course, end of the year. Events are upon us. It's hard to believe the school year is about over. Do you all have any questions for me this evening? Yes, ma'am.
TCAPs begin in third grade.
Yes, ma'am.
And then benchmark testing is continued in kindergarten, first and second.
Well, it depends on how you define benchmark testing. We do benchmark testing in preparation for TCAP in second grade through high school. We do universal screening and monitoring in kindergarten through eighth grade. And both of those are wrapped up in the third grade.
Right, so TCAP is begun in third grade.
TCAP begins in third grade, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have two public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 23-2 to designate the zoning of property newly annexed into the city of Bristol, Tennessee, as PRD, Planned Residential District. Mr. Anderson, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. Thank you. At the March 7, 2023 meeting, City Council approved the annexation of approximately 1.298 acres located adjacent to the Fox Meadows subdivision on Beaver Creek Road. The property has a current Sullivan County zoning of A1, which is a general agriculture estate residential. They're requesting the property be zoned as PRD, which is Planned Residential Development, and R2, Single Family and Duplex District, which is consistent with the surrounding property. Director of Planning, Sherith Young, is here, and she'll go into much more detail. Sherith?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Good evening, Mayor Turner, City Council members. So this is the final step to wrap up the annexation process for this little strip of land that's contiguous to Fox Meadows. So the petitioners here this evening, Jerome Maloney and Mr. Creighton Galloway, who are the two owners. The size of the property is approximately 1.45 acres. And as Mr. Anderson stated, the request here is to rezone the largest portion to the PRD, the Planned Residential District, which will match the zoning that's present in the Fox Meadows development that's under development right now. And then a very small section of this property would be rezoned to R2, which is a single-family and duplex district, which will match up with Mr. Galloway's property. So I do just have a map here to show you, just so everybody's sure of this, how this kind of divides out. So this larger section of the annexed property will go with this PRD zoning that's present with Fox Meadows. And then this little, small, tiny square here goes with Mr. Galloway's property, which is already in city limits and is zoned R2. So this is included in the plan of services. We stated that this was the zoning that would move forward. As Mr. Anderson stated, the first reading of this ordinance was at your March meeting, when the annexation was approved. And with tonight's public hearing and second reading of the ordinance, if it's passed, that will wrap up the annexation process for this little, small sliver of land.
Okay, good. Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, this hearing is hereby closed. Let's see here, we have, that's our, I think I've gotten, what's that? Yeah, 23-3. Our next public hearing is ordinance 23-3, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee, by designating certain property as R3 multifamily on Gulf Street. This public hearing is hereby open on 23-23 to amend. Mr. Anderson, would you please summarize the matter for the public?
Yes, sir. Mr. Randy Moore, who I believe is with us this evening, is the owner of the property located at 1219 Gulf Street, and he's requesting the property be rezoned from its current zoning designation of R2 to R3, which is the multifamily zone. And if it's approved, the owner plans to construct additional parking for the property, on the property to serve the multifamily development proposed for an adjacent site. And again, we'll let Ms. Young go into further detail.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So just a quick little points of background here for council and the public, of course. The property here, under a rezoning request, is 1219 Gulf Street. It does have approximately 225 feet of road frontage along Gulf Street. And as Mr. Anderson stated, Mr. Moore is working on a project on the adjacent property to convert the existing building into loft apartments. And with the successful rezoning request, if approved tonight, would plan to construct a future parking lot on that property to serve his building and tenants of the loft apartment building. Here's a map of the property. So where the rezoning request is for this parcel that's hatched with red lines here. So the rezoning, the parcels that are adjacent to the rezoning request are R3, and this is the building, of course, that Mr. Moore is currently working on for his apartment building. And then you have some R2 present in the neighborhood, and then R1 here with King University. So there are single-family and duplex zoning classifications present, and then the R3 zoning that's located to the south on the adjacent parcel. Here are just a couple of photos of the property. You can see the vacant lot here, and then the loft apartment building on the side here on the right. And then just quickly, our future land use map does show that this area here, in this hatched pink, will be developed as a neighborhood commercial-type land use classification. So the future land use map does support this rezoning request. We did notify the public of this rezoning request by letters to adjacent property owners and then a sign on the property. We've not received any comment letters in opposition or support for the project. And the Planning Commission did review this request at their meeting on February 20, and they did vote unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to City Council on the request.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, this public hearing is hereby closed. Next, we come to the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council on any matter that is not printed on the agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will likely not be made at this time. In most cases, neither the council nor interim city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The interim city manager will look into the matter and report back to City Council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Please limit comments to three minutes. And I have a list here, and we only have one person, Daniel Jimenez. If you'd just come and state your address at the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor Turner, councilmen, councilwomen, for this opportunity. I am Daniel Jimenez. I live at 521 Tennessee Avenue. I'm proud to be living in the city of Bristol. It's where I raised my family, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity. On June 2003, the city of Bristol, Tennessee, assisted me with rehabilitation help on my, I was rehabilitating or updating the house. I couldn't afford it. But, so, forgive me, I'm nervous.
You're fine.
The subject has to do with the homeowner rehabilitation, community development, block grant funding. So I was accepted to get the funding, which I was, me and my wife were very grateful. And so, there was a lien put on the property, but it would be forgiven after 360 monthly installment cycles. And so, I continued to make payments, was very conscientious about it, and I just, you know, did the best that I could. I'm very grateful, and that's why I wanted to come here in person versus just writing a letter or not even doing anything. From a personal point of view, how much of an impact this help from the city of Bristol, and what a blessing it was for me and my family and my children to have this help. So on January 10, 2023, the approved, so the committee approved a forgiveness of the deed of trust and grant the note with the Community Development Block Grant Program. So, and I got this in the letter in the mail, but I hope this committee continues to help people like myself. You know, I wasn't born rich. I just worked all my life, but I just wanted to thank you all and may God bless you for what you've done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak? We have no appointments on tonight's agenda. We do have two ordinances for consideration on first reading this evening. First, we have ordinance 23-4 to abandon a portion of Odessa Drive as public right-of-way. Mr. Anderson, would you please summarize ordinance 23-4?
Yes, sir, thank you. In January of 2023, staff received a request from Mr. Thomas Davenport Jr. on behalf of Dr. and Mrs. Tom Green, owners of the property located at 105 Odessa Drive, to abandon a portion of the right-of-way adjacent to their property. Their house is located on a tract approximately 2.1 acres, which was originally plotted as five lots. To provide street access for the proposed five lots, the area had a cul-de-sac, which was carved out of the street frontage to the back end to the property. Dr. and Mrs. Green were not aware of the existence of the cul-de-sac, and a portion of their driveway and front portico extended into that portion of the right-of-way. I'm going to let Sherith finish this up and grab any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So tonight, we're going to, or the first reading request tonight is for an ordinance to abandon some right-of-way on the property of Dr. and Mrs. Green. So Tom did an excellent job with that introduction. I'll just add a couple of points where this is the home, I'll just outline the property here. This is essentially what acts as their parcel. Their house is here, and as Tom stated, there's a little section of the portico in the driveway that extend into this little square here that shows as right-of-way. Dr. and Mrs. Green also own these properties across the street, so they really own all of the access points onto Odessa Drive here. As part of the process to abandon the right-of-way, we did notify all utilities that could be impacted and received no objection with this right-of-way abandonment. And as part of the process, we took this to the Planning Commission, who reviewed this on February 20 and voted to send a favorable recommendation to City Council on their request. So just quickly, I'll just show, this is a little bit unique. So this is their property on this side of Odessa Drive. This is the house. But what happened is, as originally plotted, there were three lots that essentially had about, kind of a square cul-de-sac that they would utilize to access their property. And if you think back, and you can see here on the comparison, the Greens' property sits kind of right in the center of these three lots. So effectively, they are taking up all three of those lots, have a little bit of an odd square remainder portion of right-of-way in their parcel, and the request is simply to abandon that to them because it doesn't exactly make sense for anybody. So as part of the process, the first reading for the ordinance to abandon the right-of-way is this evening, and if successful, we'll bring back a second reading at your meeting in May.
Does any member of council have questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-4 for the proposed abandonment of right-of-way of Odessa Drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 23-2? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this matter? I believe we are ready for a vote, though.
Mayla Muckler?
Yes.
Ed Strider?
Yes.
Mark Button?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance 23-5 to amend the zoning ordinance to add full-service restaurants and limited-service eating places as used as permitted by special use permit in the R3 multifamily district. Mr. Anderson, would you please summarize ordinance 23-5?
Yes, sir. During the January and February meetings of the Planning Commission, a discussion was held concerning the potential of a full-service restaurant/brew pub at the golf club of Bristol on Old Jonesboro Road. The primary zoning of the property is R1A, which is low-density, single-family residential, with approximately five acres near the tennis courts that's zoned R3, which is multifamily residential. This is the property of the former Bristol Country Club, and it had a structure located in the R1A zone, which included a clubhouse, restaurant, bar, and golf pro shop. That structure has been demolished and removed, and this zoning text amendment will actually deal with the special use permit, and I'm going to let Sherith go much farther into detail on this one.
Thank you. So tonight, I'll present the first reading for the ordinance to amend the R3 district regulations to allow for a food service establishment in the R3 zone with a special use permit approved by the Planning Commission. The R3 zone is a multifamily residential zone in the city of Bristol. And I will point out that though this language could create the path for a brew pub or a restaurant to potentially ask for a special use permit that would be approved by the Planning Commission, the request tonight is not for that particular property or for that particular business. We're simply talking tonight about adding the language to the zoning ordinance. We're simply talking tonight about adding the language to the zoning ordinance that would potentially, you know, enable someone to ask for the permission to, to do something like a brew pub or, or a food service establishment. So as Mr. Anderson stated in his introduction, the Planning Commission did talk about this for a couple of months. The Planning Commission was approached by an individual, Adam Woodson, with the Damascus Brewery, who was interested in the Country Club property as a potential location for a brew pub. His, his idea or his plan is to open a full-service restaurant, so they would have a full-service dining component, and they would brew their own beer there. So that's the idea from Mr. Woodson that was presented to the Planning Commission. That currently, as it stands right now, our R1A, our R3, our residential zones don't allow that type of use. So the Planning Commission consider, considered a couple of different ideas or changes. We went through a couple of different options. And the, and the best suited for this application to the Planning Commission was to amend the R3 district to allow for a food service establishment by special use permit. So the language that's included in your packet, the red line copy, shows how the ordinance would change to allow this full-service restaurant in the R3 district. So you'll see it as Item B under the uses, use permitted by special use permit only. So we would add full-service restaurant and limited-service eating place. So that means full service, a place where you go in, sit down at a table, and have a server that takes your order, brings your food. The limited-service eating place means counter service. So you, somewhere you go to the counter and order your sandwich or coffee or something like that. So either one would be allowed with a special use permit. Now, if you recall, the special use permit in general has some criteria that the Planning Commission must consider before they approve or extend a special use permit for a business. So that allows them, just in general, special use permit anywhere in the city, to look at ingress, egress, signage, general compatibility with the area, utilities. There's seven different components that they are tasked to look at with a special use permit. This addition goes a little bit further, and it's going to say that, and these are the numbered items underneath Item B, that the parcel must have frontage on an arterial or collector street as identified on the major road plans that the city has adopted. So that's going to eliminate the ability to, for somebody to open a business used back on a residential street. So this would be main streets, essentially main streets only. And I have a map here, I'll show you in just a second of what those are. Number two, it's going to say that new construction must comply with the Chapter 4A design standards. So that's going to require a certain, a certain quality of elevations for the building. So prohibition of a couple of different kinds of materials, and then the addition of architectural features so that the, the building will fit in. Item three is going to say that drive-through windows and drive-up service are prohibited. So we don't have a conflict between drive-up uses, drive-through uses, and residential areas. And then number four, it's going to say, in addition to the specific rules for review found in the special use permit section, so that's the ingress, egress, signage, general compatibility, we're going to add a couple extra considerations for the Planning Commission to look at. And that is to look at the different components that could be at play with any particular use. Is there going to be outdoor seating? Is there going to be outdoor amplification of music? Are there going to be bands that are playing? So each business owner would present to their Planning Commission what their plan would be for those kind of add-on amenities that they might have, but also that could impact the neighborhood. So it's going to allow an extra level of scrutiny for the Planning Commission to have in terms of the location and how these things operate and the hours of operation for each use. So that's a big change. This, you do have a clean copy on your package, so this is just all those red lines taken away. It looks, makes it look nice and pretty. I will point out that the setbacks that are in the chart are going to say for other permitted structures, they're going to be a little bit greater than if it was a single-family home or a town, or a duplex. If it was just a residential structure, so you're going to have a front yard, rear yard setback requirement of 35 feet, and then a side yard setback of 20 feet if you have one of these business uses. And then finally, this is the major road plan, and I know it's a little bit hard to see up here, but you can see that there are not, obviously, every street in the city is not identified as an arterial, arterial or collector. So these are going to be the major roads that traverse the city that would be even possibly applicable for this situation, just to make sure that we don't have a, introduce a traffic problem into a residential street. The Planning Commission did look at this for a couple of months, and then March 20th reviewed this final draft. The recommendation to City Council is for a favorable, favorable recommendation on these changes. That, be happy to answer any questions.
Does any member of council have questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 23-5?
The only thing I'd like to say is that, you know, serving on the Planning Commission, we, we studied this in detail. It wasn't no quick decision, and we looked at every aspect of it. And also going back and reflecting, you know, this is putting that property pretty much back to what it originally was at one time. So I think it'd be a great asset for that community and look forward to moving down the road.
Okay. The public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we're ready for a vote. Velma, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Ed Turner?
Yes.
Mark Hutton?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have two ordinances for adoption on second reading. The first is ordinance 23-2 to designate the zoning of property newly annexed into the city of Bristol, Tennessee as PRD, Arted Development Group, Galloway, Fox Meadows. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have a question for staff? Is there a motion to take action?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-2, designating the zoning of property newly annexed into the city through PRD.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss 23-2? Seeing none, Velma, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Yes.
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 All right, next, we have ordinance 23-2, amending the city's zoning map for rezoning property located at 1219 Golf Street as R3 multifamily residential zone. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 23-3.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss 23-3? Public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during public hearings, so Velma, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Yes.
Ed Turner?
Yes.
Mark Hutton?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next, we have Resolution 23-29, expressing the city's commitment to funding upgrades necessary to create a new home for the Bristol Stateliners at White Top Creek Park. Mr. Anderson, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, sir. In February of 2020, City Council approved a resolution formalizing their support for the continued operation of the Appalachian League baseball. And at the February 2023 work session, there was a discussion about the potential of public-private partnership in the development of a new baseball facility at White Top Creek Park. The proposed facility will serve as the home stadium for the Bristol Stateliners, and it, which is an affiliate team of the Appalachian League. In addition, the venue could serve as a gate day, game day stadium for the Bristol, Tennessee school baseball teams and host other outdoor events such as concerts and other events. During the March work session of 2023, staff presented a proposal to council for converting one of the fields of the city's White Top Creek Park into a field suitable for the Appalachian League play, high school play, and concerts, including the amenities necessary for such events. Presently, the cost of the proposal is anticipated to be approximately $7 million, with $2 million of the cost to be funded by a private entity that is interested in working with the city and Bristol Baseball, Inc., to keep baseball in Bristol. We do have, Terry Napier's here for any other detail that we'd have with the park, but that's pretty much summarizes where we are for the resolution.
Does any member of council have questions for staff?
I don't have questions. I was going to comment. Are we going to get back around to commenting, or are we just asking questions right now?
Do you want to comment?
I'd like to speak in, in support of this project. There's been a lot of conversation about it. And, you know, when, when you look at the numbers at first glance, I'm sure everyone is very interested in those numbers. I think it needs to be noted that right now, we have four baseball fields in a very, in very basic condition. But we have an awesome field concession stand, two-story fieldhouse, if you will. It doesn't really provide dressing rooms just yet. And we have ample parking with the hopes of at least one additional field. And I guess our dream is for a field of dreams eventually. As Mr. Anderson said, it, it would provide a home field for Bristol baseball, which we believe is important to keep that baseball going in the Appalachian League. We were one of the founding teams, I believe, of that league. And to provide a new state-of-the-art opportunity for our Tennessee High baseball. If you looked at those two different entities in isolation, you would have a lot more expense than what we have by trying to combine these. Because currently, we have the infrastructure, we do have the bathrooms, we do have the parking lot, things have been graded. There will need to be upgrades to the lighting as well as to a proper fieldhouse. In looking at this, we didn't take it lightly. We understand that it also would provide an excellent training facility for not only our high school, but realizing that Bristol Little League right now has over 530 players right now. It's great. I spent Sunday afternoon in Abingdon at their baseball facility, covered up, couldn't find parking. Lots of, lots of community engagement. It would also allow us the opportunity for tournament play for baseball, as well as some softball has been played down there. We, it's our intention that the playground there would be renovated. And the four fields that are there now across the parking lot from that, there would be some irrigation work that needed to be done, but to add two more baseball fields there. We know that with the investors that are committed to this along with us, that this could become a premier training facility as well as a place to play for community engagement. We also know that it could be used as an entertainment venue in many other areas. The baseball fields of this nature, with some of the same sponsorship, can seat as many as 2,500 to 3,000. With the surrounding fields, we believe that it could take on just a whole nother aspect of entertainment. For Bristol, Tennessee is the birthplace of country music. We haven't taken our discussions lightly in regard to this, the fact that we have substantial investors coming to the table to work with us to make this happen, and the synergy that it would bring to Highway 394 right there at the track. We are, this field, this park is just a very short distance from many new residential opportunities that are being constructed at this time, as well as, in the opposite direction, our industrial area where we have the largest substation between Knoxville and Roanoke. We also know that if you go back towards the interstate on Highway 394, we are seeing a good bit of development there with many businesses that are progressively growing in that area. So we have, we have talked about this, we have studied this for quite some time. We've looked at multiple sites. We've looked down in the downtown area. The cost of land is prohibitive on the one hand, and to find enough land to do what we would like to do is just really not a possibility. We had been asked to research some other venues a little bit further out from town, not quite out to 394, but we found that those, given the infrastructure that we currently have in place, would be too costly, could not accommodate what it was that we were trying to do. So there has been a tremendous amount of time, effort, research put into this. And so I, I am very happy to be supportive of Resolution 23-29.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
One thing I want to emphasize everything, or everyone. What I want to be completely transparent is I've always been, in the past and ever since, I've been a member of the Bristol, Tennessee City Councils. I've been a volunteer member for over 22 years with Bristol Baseball, Inc., and I've been its president for approximately 18 of those years. I do not receive any compensation, nor does any of the other staff of BBI. This has been the makeup of this board long before my involvement. Simply put, we do this for the love of the sport. We do this for the love of our community. And we do this as to keep a part of our history alive in Bristol. You know, this also serves as an economic driver of tourism for Bristol. Also, therefore, I'm in support of Resolution 23-29 as well.
Is there a motion to take action on this item?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 23-29.
Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Would any member of council like to further discuss Resolution 23-29?
All I would say is I'm excited about it and the potential it has as an economic driver, and a place really for, to continue baseball in Bristol in, in a really powerful way. I've seen the way it, this kind of, this kind of facility really brings the community together and does a lot of great things for us. And to reiterate what Councilwoman Powers said about a field of dreams, I mean, I think about that in terms of this, this idea of building this stadium, but also hopefully being able one day to, to create a place for all people in Bristol. Like we, you know, we heard about autism today, and I just, this is just one of those great places, a possibility for that sort of thing. So I can't say enough about it, I'm for it.
Would anyone in the audience like to comment? If so, would you please go to the podium and state your name and address? Seeing none, I think Velma, we're ready for a vote.
Yes.
Ed Turner?
Yes.
Mark Hutton?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Resolution 23-35, formalizing the city council's support for the Bristol Train Station Foundation. Mr. Anderson, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, sir. This resolution formalizes city council's support for the Bristol Train Station Foundation and their plans to raise financial support for capital improvements and programming for the Bristol Train Station. This facility has been central to the establishment and growth of both Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia since 1856. The stone-of-brick passenger station is, is significant as one in the last survive, as one of the last surviving examples of outstanding structures built by Norfolk and Western Railway. Since 1999, it has been maintained for public use under ownership of the Bristol Train Station Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization. Rail service came to Bristol in 1856, with the last train providing regular passenger service in 1971. As council is aware, it was recently announced that passenger rail service will be returning to the Twin Cities. And in preparation for this event, the Bristol Train Station Foundation is undertaking a campaign to renovate and improve our iconic train station for the benefit of the community and many visitors who enjoy the multicultural and natural treasures of our region.
Does any member of council have questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Morgan.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-35.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 23-35?
I would. I've had the honor of serving on the train station board, and this is really exciting. One of the great things in this is that my grandfather actually worked at that train station way before I ever came around, but, so this is a really fantastic opportunity for us. The reality, though, is that there have to be improvements made. I mean, ADA compliance, you think about rail service there, you're going to have to raise the platform in order to meet the train. That's a significant expense, and so the foundation is underway of trying to write grants, and this is one of those ways that we show support as a city. I know our counterparts across the way in Bristol, Virginia are doing the same sort of thing. We kind of had hoped that we would be able to do this together, but we want to make sure that we communicate this fully, that we are in support of this, and as a way to bring our two cities together, which is a powerful thing, but also to really pave the way for rail to go all the way through, from Virginia into Tennessee and parts beyond. It's a really exciting opportunity, and I hope that we'll see this soon, so.
You know, it's really amazing, all the celebrity-type people that's come through Bristol on that train and got off that train and spent a little time here in Bristol. One that I like to hear and read the stories about is Babe Ruth. He spent time here in Bristol. Elvis Presley spent time here in Bristol, rode the train, and he's coming back from his military assignment. So there's a lot of history there, and I think it's a great thing that's been revived, and I think there's going to be many great things in the future again for rail.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, Velma, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Yes.
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 All right, next, we're to the consent agenda. Mr. Anderson, is the consent agenda complete, or is there any additions?
We have one late addition that I'll read into the record when I get to it. It's Item H.
Okay.
We have the minutes of the March 7, 2023 city council meeting.
Hold on, just, hold on, just, is there any thing anyone wants to remove? Okay, all right. Sorry.
My bad. The minutes of the March 7, 2023 city council meeting, minutes of the March 28, 2023 city council work session, Resolution 23-30, authorizing payment to Troutman Pepper, Hamilton Sanders, LLP for legal fees, Resolution 23-31, awarding a bid for purchase tobacco loader for utility services, Resolution 23-32, awarding the bid for purchase of a trench compactor for utility services, Resolution 23-33, awarding the bid for building demolition, Resolution 23-34, authorizing emergency rental of a street sweeper, and Resolution 23-36, authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Ford Expedition under the state contract. And this is the late addition, and this is part of the accordance of the employment agreement with the incoming city manager to provide a late-model vehicle. It authorizes the purchase of a Ford Expedition from Lonnie Cobb Ford of Henderson, Tennessee via the state contract. If it's approved, it's going to allow for the purchase and receipt of the vehicle prior to April 19, making it available for use by the new city manager upon arrival. The Expedition is a 2023 four-door base model, four-by-four, and is available for purchase at the state contract price of $57,205. This is something which allows us to not have to wait six months to a year, maybe a year and a half, before a vehicle becomes available. So I'm going to read Resolution 23-36. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Ford Expedition under the state contract. Whereas pursuant to its employment agreement with the city manager of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, is obligated to provide a late-model vehicle for the city manager's official business use. And whereas the city's purchasing policy in Tennessee Code Annotated 12-3-1201 permits the city to make purchase under the state contract without competitive solicitation or private, excuse me, public advertisement. Whereas Lonnie Cobb Ford has a 2023 Expedition four-door four-by-four base model available through the state contract for the $57,205, which is available for purchase prior to the city manager's April 19 start date. Whereas the interim city manager recommends that the Ford Expedition be purchased under the state contract. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Bristol, Tennessee, that the recommendation of the interim city manager is accepted and purchase of the 2023 Ford Expedition from Lonnie Cobb Ford, 1618 Highway 45 North, Henderson, Tennessee, 38340-4005Z, in the amount totaling of $57,205 in strict accordance with the bid under the state contract. Whereupon, the mayor declared the resolution adopted a fix signature and date thereto, and directed that the same be recorded.
Okay, I got a little, apologize, I got ahead of myself. Now, is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second, Velma? Could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 All right, next, we have our city manager's report. Mr. Anderson?
Oh, this is going to be very short and sweet. Now, just, April 19 is a very special day. That's when Kelly Bujoir will be joining our team here. Everybody is really anticipating and excited for her arrival, and also wanted to remind you all that April 25, 5:00 PM, is our next work session. We've got a lot of things to deal with as far as putting the book together for the budget. We'll be communicating with Kelly, plus you all, as far as the scheduling going forward. And then on a personal note, I just, I know you all are aware, but you all have wonderful department heads and employees, and I knew this long before I had the short tenure of being an interim, but now I see it up close daily, and you all should be proud. You have a spectacular staff. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, next, city council comments.
I'll lead off. I'll concur with Tom. We do have an exceptional staff. They come through for us over and over and over again. I would say that we are probably one of the most prepared councils, commissions in our region, if not in the state. It's unbelievable the work that our staff does and that they so graciously pass on to us to be sure that we have a clear understanding. Thank you to the school system. I know, as a former educator, the next few weeks will be interesting, to say the least, with all the testing, and we appreciate the concern that you have had for our children's security and continue to have moving forward. It's not cliche to say, you can't say it enough, but our thoughts and prayers are with those families in Nashville that have suffered this great tragedy, the loss of three children and the loss of the three adult educators. As we celebrate Holy Week this week, I hope we all have a very blessed and meaningful Easter season, and that we reflect on not only our blessings, but on those that we would like to share with others in their time of grief. Thank you.
Just one thing in regards to what Lee mentioned there about the unfortunate events that happened in Nashville. It was reassuring today. We had spent some time with Senator Blackburn, and she talked about, you know, funds for the school systems, funds for a lot of things to secure the schools, and along with her governor, Bill Lee, you know, he is coming to the table with some significant funding as well. So I think, you know, the help that's needed is on the way, but there's still so much more that we all need to be doing. And vigilance is a huge, huge, important part of that, and I agree with Dr. Tudor on it. It can't just be the teachers at school, it's got to be others in our community as well. But our police officers, you know, they play a vital role in helping that, and I know that, you know, a lot of the kids look up to them, you know, they become real close with them and become real friends to them. So, yeah, it's very important. It's near and dear to all of us. And, Mr. Anderson, I want to thank you publicly for the job you've done here in the last couple of weeks. You've done a great job, and we do have a wonderful staff, and put them up with any of across the country. Thank you.
I concur. I really, I don't have anything other, so I guess with that, we're adjourned.